Activity for strategic planning. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, no, I didn't receive a double comment, so. Move on to the subsequent.
So, and if he's Bill, who is leading our strategic planning for the Modra Community School and we first before we get started, we like to go around and do some introductions. Right? Okay, I'm Michelle Dawkins. I'm the Executive Director of Modra Community School. McKenna McKee, a board member.
John Mo.
Jen Langley, Assistant Principal.
Don King. A lot of. Operations manager.
Tiffany Strands, a board member.
About the team around you in the board member. Board member and acting of sport treasures.
Lisa Stevenson, SEL teacher.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm Julia Good Stefani, a member of the board.
Great, that's all the board members. Just, you know, just to acknowledge the role of the board is that you are ultimately responsible for improving this strategic plan. And be looking to get as much of the input from you as as the process goes. But if I can wordsmith a little bit, I don't see myself leading this. I see.
You're facilitating it?
That's about it. You're leading it and while the board plays a very critical role in terms of improving and having input, I also see that it's my view of a strategic plan is it really has to come from up organically, and that's why I emphasize a lot in the first phase of our strategic plan gathering information. And particularly to since the execution of the future plan will predominantly fall on the staff and the faculty to make sure that they are a vital part of the process. So because they're going to be doing the heavy lifting as well as also part of the strategic plan search is to try to identify the voices that are not in this room but should be heard. And how do you go about doing that? So that's still kind of for the board members kind of approach that I that I take. So that really you are the leaders or the strategic, the steering committee are the leaders of the process. And I will do my best to facilitate. Tonight's a little different, though. Tonight, hopefully, it's just fun. And the design of the moonshot beauty is about the process of thinking differently and thinking big. So the goal is not to produce any actionable items tonight, okay? That's, I'm going to say that probably a hundred more times. I'll say it again the second time. You don't have to worry about producing actionable items. It is about the process. It's literally designed to kind of get your creative juices going. Now, if it happens that something comes up that the parent community goes, we may want to think of this as one of our goals, then great. Again, it's not, it's not required or necessary. So and with just give you a little feel for the process is that we'll we're going to start off with kind of a getting into groups, assigning different roles within the group. And do what's called the empathy map, because again, as I said with the strategic plan, you want to get in touch with who are the people that you're serving in terms of this this school? And then get into some of the problems and the challenges that they're facing. And really just kind of, but then begin kind of what if these are the problems and challenges, how might we meet those? What could you do? And that's where we're going to really stretch. And at the end, each of your groups are going to have a develop a pitch.
Sorry, I just I just sent a text to Robin to see if it was being recorded.
So the actual end goal of the of the evening will be that you'll have a pitch that your group has developed. And we will conclude with kind of a shark tank kind of episode where your group will have to make a pitch to the rest of the group. And the rest of the group like the shark tank, pick it apart. You know, and and push against it and talk about it or hopefully also excitedly applaud and say, yes, we'll invest 12 million. So anyway, that's just a quick overview. So just to get started, I just need to do a head count. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. So we'll have three groups of four. And there is someone on the on this here. So who is it? So I at least can acknowledge your presence.
I'm Robin. I'm just live streaming the meeting. I won't be part of the strategic session. You guys have a good night.
Yeah, it would be very hard to get you into these groups, but yeah, I appreciate you hanging out and listening. And because I'm going to be more focused here. Maybe you can all help every once in a while to check in with Robin and go, hey, what are you hearing? Or what, you know, so and it's going to get a little noisy because with maybe when we break into groups of three, one can stay a little bit closer in this room so that she can hear at least observe one group or be a part of the group as much as possible.
She's just our technical person.
Oh, you're the. Yeah, that's fine. It's very important.
You may hear or see something that you want to bring to our attention. So let's break into three groups. Now, what I would like is not to have all the board members in the same group. So there's how many board members here tonight?
We're all in a kind of mostly in a row.
One.
We count off by fours or something.
There are seven, seven board members.
I bet it, Matt.
Oh, you're not a board member.
So but if I want three groups, there's going to be two board members per group.
One group will have three.
One group will have three?
It's a odd number.
Why don't we try to, so if we could do three board members right here and then two and oh, no, there's three.
So those, those are all board members. Your board member.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But she's not.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Bet you're not. I said that.
Okay, so let's do the two, two and three. So, so, okay, now in terms of staff. How many staff are left over? One, two, three.
Four.
Four. Okay, so the two of you are going to go and help me out here.
Yeah, or something exactly. We have a community member.
Okay.
A parent.
So.
So the parent in the mix.
So we just did one.
Vitamin C.
Swap those two right in the middle.
Five people that need to go into those groups. And so only one of us needs to go into the group of three, right? And then and then two in the other group.
Okay, so so this is one group right here. Okay, and then we have.
There it goes. Yep, and.
Both of you are. Are.
Board. So we'll take two more.
So take you take two more. So we could do the two of you.
Okay.
So.
John and Michelle.
Here's our second group.
Me and McKenna are the other two.
With Dawn in. Great.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
So I would say. So the first thing is if you could go ahead and stab yourself in different places. Then you get fouled.
Wait, you're going there. One of us, what? Our kids go to my office.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
Is that okay?
And there's one group that stay here.
Marie is going to get dropped off though. Like 115 minutes, if you notice him, will you just say, yeah, tell him where I am. Oh, Marie, you're there. Just welcome him there.
Hey, don't go too far away, guys, because I. Okay, so the first task of the group is if you notice on your handouts on page two, each person has to have a role. Okay, so if you all turn to page two. Can you guys hear me okay here? Page two, if you want to, you want to take on one of these roles. So you need someone who's going to take notes during the whole next period of time. You need someone who's going to be more the timekeeper. Okay, not so much facilitator as the timekeeper. You got to keep people on task. Because again, I'm going to move very, very quickly. The designer is probably a little bit closer to a facilitator. They're going to be focusing on the process. Making sure that people stay focused, that 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 you're accomplishing the task that's there. And then the third person is the lead for six. So when there's going to be a pitch at the end, that's the person who's going to make the pitch to the whole group. Okay, so I'm going to give you like two minutes to determine what role you're going to take. Two minutes to come up with a role. Whatever you got, but you got you got a minute and 40 seconds to come up with this. Clear on the roles? Any questions or maybe you know who you are? Great, okay, guys, thank you. You all have your roles? Great. Okay, so the first, the first task is on page four, and it's the empathy map. So again, this is the part where I want you to start thinking about who you are serving. Who who is your community? And I'm going to give you about like I'm going to, I'm going to give you about five minutes. No, I'll give you a little bit. I'm sorry, I I skipped it, skipped that. I jumped ahead by dot turning the page correctly. It is page three, which is coming up with a big huge audacious goal. Okay, so what you want to do is again, this is based on again Kennedy's thing of going for the moon and having that that you have a person on the moon by the end of this of the decade. And so I want you to pick out the biggest hairy audacious goal you can think of. I put three kind of very general ones, but you are not limited to those. You can modify them. You can add, or you could take something completely different. But the idea is you want to go big. And I'm going to give you about five minutes. Come up with that. Actually, sorry, you have 15 minutes to do it. I had five minutes to explain it to you. Okay, so 15 minutes.
Well, thank you for asking.
When you have it, you can scribble it down here.
I feel like both those things and I feel like also though, for me, I feel like I want to make sure definitely the success of our students when they leave here and prepare them for high school and life beyond for sure. But I just feel like while they're here, I really want them to feel like they belong, like every person belongs here. And I feel like there's a tiny gap there, like a, you know, a hole in there a little bit.
That's a line kind of like sort of bullying stuff.
Bullying, you know, the worst animal. We do our best, but I just really always am concerned some of our students might not feel.
Yeah.
I don't know if this nature, I mean, I'm setting the goals. If you could have a big goal of having analytics, but buying news. We could be teaching all our kids how to speak. And it would be reflective. Just sometimes in my mind, I can just like picture. Yeah. And so many people, yeah, with a friend, you know. And I think it's a really cool way to learn versus, you know, learn discrimination. Yeah. Eat your friends. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, get it all in there.
Make sure that you're putting it in the language of a big hairy audacious goal, not a problem. Okay, talk about the problems, but then how does that translate into a goal? Okay? That's nice and thin.
Yes. Yeah, I did talk to Nate, but he said they were thinking so like third, fourth. I read so much here. You know, silly, not silly, but like kids are always plotting at bees and forces of bees and like how where we are, just all that. Be so cool to. Also, thanks that game, like having that. So it's supposed to focus where you're really acting outside, working with animals, working in the garden gives an opportunity for more folks in the area to support. So that's to be, like, you know, and then also. And on top of that, like we take it to the next chapter, they already go together from seeds and then they're creating meals together. That sense of belonging.
Yeah.
It's just supported and merged to the new. Like it's just like supporting the culture from every single.
You do? Okay, so if you can.
Okay, so like, is it a simple, I go to school? I mean, this.
Oh, so.
Maybe really someone. I don't know.
Absolutely. I was thinking my academic, but.
They're more ignorant still, but you know, it's like. She was in love with it. She hates math.
And it's the math that you have to figure out to like give antibiotics or whatever. But like things.
Then we have five more minutes, so please take the the rest of the five minutes and make sure you have something down on the poster.
So do you want me to bullet point or do you want me to like say merger, new school, well, but that's bad.
Yeah, like the the bottom can be the job. Yeah, the goal is to.
Yeah, like develop. That's what I mean. Wait, so you're having us to label or to like work this as a goal?
Yes.
That like future focused action oriented?
Yes, yes. So we like provide every student with social and emotional support, celebrate the.
So like develop community in the school and. School.
That's that's pretty good.
Thank you.
That that's very concise.
And that's it. We're not like saying how we're.
No, 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 just.
So we're not saying.
Just put it out.
Let's just do that title and then we'll do some of these as well.
And you can write it big because that's we want to see.
So I think you want to.
He said no. He said just, he said no, like action, just what our goal is. But we could. No, our goal is just.
The environmental.
Oh, my goodness, can we do it within the next like.
Was there two L's in environmental?
You know, whenever I have to chart for people, I can quote from like, oh, who is it? Hemingway or somebody who says like, if you only can, if you only know one way to spell a word, you're just not.
Right? There we go. Okay, sorry.
Place based meats. So if you could explain that.
Oh, then you can.
Yeah.
Guys, we're talking right now.
No, no, well, or when you when you present it to the group. Okay.
What did I just say? The activities of. What if we, what if we kind of do the way.
So period, that's our goal.
Yeah, I mean, because I think the longing piece is really.
About one more minute?
Oh, my God.
So just start writing. We're adding things.
Well, that's it's fine. As long as it's big, want to go big.
And then, I mean, for me also, I know I advertised to the community, which my people, my community were saying, like, it's not just Modra Community School.
Ties to end of 15. You all can just sit right here. I think about winemaking. I keep the community economy, that comes to all. It's more friendly.
Yeah, so I love that service, I mean.
Oh, was I supposed to add economy?
Oh, was I supposed to add economy?
Yes, yeah, please bring your goal up. Okay.
Cheers.
Alrighty.
She's coming out.
Why don't if you got drinks, bring them.
Shouldn't we hide it somewhere?
Okay, so each group's gonna share their big hairy audacious goal. Um, as we move through the evening, you are, if you like, if you like what you see, you can steal it, okay? So. Anyway, so if someone can present.
It's you, babe.
So our first very big hairy goal was to build a new school building and campus, but to also with that to add a community center, so like have a pool and a really big gymnasium and things that the community could really utilize. Um, so make it a lot more about community and bring in the community and and um just more, just a beautiful new big building in whole campus. Our other one was moving from a public charter into a private charter and finding private funding so we can become a private charter, which would leave us or give us a more freedom to do things and.
Those are big.
And so concrete, I love it.
All right, great.
Let's do it.
The group that was here in this room?
Yeah, in this room?
Or this room, or you're fine.
I don't want to lose the bit, the swimming pool. Add swimming, swimming in here somewhere, but um ours is building a place of learning that fosters play, curiosity, self-confidence, sense of self, grit, stewardship of place and community and resilience. And then there was, we started our discussion with a recognition that the foundation. You guys can correct me, my group can correct me, but it that there's 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 a little bit of a chicken and egg where it's like you have this sort of place, you will also um foster or like build a foundation of social and emotional well-being and integration with families. So we were also thinking about how do you get the community and the parents and sort of that seamlessness and how do you get your kids to be at a baseline place where they feel really safe and ready to learn?
Again, not nice contrast where the the first group was more of a kind of an external, you know, structure, both private, public. And here, this is about the internal structure, yeah, yeah, excellent.
Okay.
This group.
Okay, so we were dreaming big, but it's a really good idea. Um, so our goal is to create an environmentally focused, placed-based bilingual school. Similar to what y'all were just saying, where everyone has a sense of belonging here. There's us, we're developing strong academic toolbox for all the kids, including through things like four H, having an animal garden. Um, lots of ties and connections with our community and then also with the economy up for it.
And I ask, because I didn't understand, what's place, place based mean?
Place based is like focusing on our, where we are and teaching from that perspective, from like a cultural, environmentally, geologically, um, kind of using the world around you outside to um, kind of ground, like grounding your education in that.
Yeah.
So lots of field trips, lots of trips down to the river, putting your hands in the soil, that kind of thing.
Right.
We're the gorge, though, I mean, it's amazing.
And so again, I mean, what's what I like about three big, audacious hairy goals is is where you have the external structure, you have the internal structure, but now here, this is the, this is the kind of fits well with the community center, kind of what comes with the community, yeah, excellent. Okay, all right, hold on to those, because you're gonna, you're gonna be tapping into them and for their, for their, as 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 we move through and start tackling some big ideas. So now if you go to page four, the whole thing is that you have to know who you're designing for, who who you're creating the strategic plan for. And so the the virtue of empathy is an essential ingredient in trying to understand who you're serving. So you're gonna have five minutes on your own privately, quietly to fill out who you have, the student's family that you have in mind. And then how do you think they might think or feel? What do you think they see and say? What do they hear and what do they do? But just to kind of create this empathy map. And after five minutes of just writing on your own, in your small groups, share it with each other. And and then we'll do a quick review totally, okay? So I'm gonna give you the, I'm I'm gonna start the clock at five minutes for you, the private thing, and then um and then stay one to share. Yeah, yeah, so 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 five minutes, just just privately, quietly filling out that page four. On your own.
So what are they thinking, feeling, all of that right now?
Yeah, yeah, whoever had in mind, so if you're thinking of a single mom reason.
Right, how does she feel having her kid at the school or period, sort of?
Period, just you want to tap into what they're, what would it be like to live in their world?
Action.
One more minute before you share. Okay, so like you to take the next ten minutes to kind of share in your group what you wrote on the empathy map. But as you're listening to each other, I want you to begin to start listing some of the problems that you're hearing in that empathy map. And on page five, the scribe in the group can begin to start writing down what some of those problems that you're hearing. But again, that's that, that's just the job of the scribe. Uh, the rest, you're just gonna just share what you've written and we'll see what happens.
Well, English Spanish, we can do the general, if I'm thinking about kids at their school. Some speaking, there's some Spanish somewhere above or at very low, somewhere below. And so when I think about, when we're thinking, something is too hard, they're asked to do, they don't understand, some are bored. Some don't want to go to school, I'm not wanting to give support from the school though. They see kids that are like them, kids that aren't like them, they hear friends affirming words, they also hear bullying, critical words. They're supporting teachers, I guess, hearing support, because they feel. To achieve the work before they, when they get distracted by that. I just feel.
I just said that I that the um students, I guess, that I am, I know students who struggle with traditional classroom learning. What do they think and feel? They feel anxiety, frustration, um, which can lead to feelings of self-confidence about being able to be successful. We see and say, they see chairs, but they need to sit in, they see world, just a lot. Um, what do they hear? They hear teachers, I don't get their final voices, um, certain English. And what do they do? They actually give up what they're thinking. So that was more like, like yours was broader and kids that are following, which is really good to think about, because those kids that are high achievers do get bored and they have same struggles. So, yeah, my focus was a little narrow, but I can just go forward and change those kinds of.
Yeah, it's hard to think, it's hard to read all of it.
Yeah. That's a. I'll be richer than all, right? Yeah, yeah.
Setting my bar. And the kids are achieving other people. Need more time, time.
And also different approaches, like I feel like what you said about, what are they seeing, they see balls and see.
Yeah, that's been going on for years. When I was in the focus. I just. I have a lot of families. And that's one of my. Teachers, agricultural workers.
Yeah, I mean, just it's easy as this was. Food for kids, you know, and that can be solved even more. And much, so at least they get good ones. That probably takes a lot of stress off.
Goats could totally be back there. Yeah, eat it up.
Is that the only way to get rid of that?
If I have another two minutes. So again, if you've gone around and shared the empathy math, start working on page five of listing the problems. Want to go ahead and you you started on the listing your problems?
No.
You're good.
Quantifying impact, how many groups, students or families, parents, a problem, how the impact is in their lives? So if you wanted to say a percentage of our students that are impacted by food insecurity or or persons that are impacted that are by legal, there are Spanish speaking that are impacted by the fact that they're communicating. I don't know what percentage, thirty or ten?
It's it's a little higher, it was forty three or forty seven last year. Forty five, yeah, let's do forty five.
One more minute. One more minute.
And Dan's just was like the, like sort of range of learning and um.
You need the, the range of students, right? You know, students need extra help. And I don't know if it's a term or whether it's a sensitive term. Cause you have to, you have to keep it high up there where we produce students that can meet the needs of the next school, but also somehow other students that, you know, close enough to.
Okay, alrighty. Not to worry, you're gonna still have plenty of time here now to uh work the problems, but if I could have your attention just for a moment. Okay, I want to make sure you all can hear me in this room. So basically now you're gonna have thirty minutes to work in your groups and you're gonna be self-directed during this time. So timekeepers, really, uh you gotta do your job. But you're gonna be basically working through pages five to ten. And what you want to be able to get to by six thirty is the scribe being able to write and fill in your pitch on page ten, because it's your pitch that you're gonna be presenting to the Shark Tank other groups, okay? Um, and if you start finding that you're running out of time, go ahead and skip page nine, the financial model. That usually takes a little, and we're not really worried about how much it costs at this point anyway. So, cause I want you to go big. Okay, so you got thirty minutes. Work through those pages. Problems, solutions, pitch.
Yeah, I mean, just keep, keep, yeah, they want to solve.
Okay, so we're going back to. So what problems do we have so far? Diversified learning and.
Food insecurity.
Diversified.
All right, it's not a problem, it's just a, it's a challenge, okay?
Maybe the problem is on a little. Okay. The school, our language does not reflect. Okay, so the problem, I think, I mean.
There's reaching.
Yeah, I mean, it's the problem just that like our education isn't, like the way that we're educating doesn't work for all the students.
That kind of would be what I was, I think, but I think things would just not like.
Different kids are different classes, and I think at some point they will get there, but it's just gonna take them a while. Like, it's okay, three years, reading, or a watch shirt, and pot himself out and watching. So just seeing this kid's life. Except for me, it's like, I think it's just, you know, having the resources to eat. That's what I'm saying, saying, you know, you need about these things. The resources that are involved, they're involved, they provide some of them, you know, it's the cost, you know, for the staff. I mean, getting it home, like I think.
Yeah, so, so the problem then is like limited resources to the diversity of all students. But it's but that.
And where's designers and timekeepers? Keep your group on task.
Some can just have bring into work differently than the way that the structure of the teaching. And so, like, that's part of it too, but sometimes it is time, at times it's like we need a completely then like sitting down and looking at these people. So like maybe is that like a standardized thing? Like is it less standardized? The standardized approach or like the standards that were required to abide by or meet?
Certainly that's part of, you know, like what the question is supposed to. So then that's when it takes too much time for teachers to change or reach those cases in that. They may get more engaging this way or that way. I guess that's not directly related to that.
Hey, Bob, now you want to start moving off your problem list, identifying three top ones, starting to, want to make sure you're moving through the exercise?
Yeah, and like stressed out, and stressed out, anxious and depressed and all of those things and then. Poverty and all of those other like.
She was worried about the lockdown drill time and she's in the trap.
Twenty minutes to go.
I think it's a problem you're already worrying now, like the part of it we're doing. You know, like I want to focus on problems that we're gonna solve. That are ones you don't already have any time for.
So that would be the different, you know, the different sort of learning styles, that would be the Yeah, it's just the way people learn, like if you could, we could do this.
I do think that the being monolingual is one of my.
It's a problem for sure.
We want to involve one of the top three. What about, I think, the resources, the limited resources, you know?
Yeah, all of it, the way they learn, how, where they are learned.
But also the like nourish, you know, like we might go beyond just.
Oh, yeah, here's a low level, so yes, for you, like, yeah, yeah.
Was it, was Richard's class last year's class at Bradford High School?
Year before.
I remember him coming back, his class. During the summer here, I don't know where I saw that, they were a group, you know, so you realize the math, we prepared them, they were so much easier in high school than in middle school. And like, that to me stuck, it stuck over. We, our students are. It's not hard, it's hard, but they're so well prepared.
I mean, it would be nice to offer. Yeah, but it's kind of important, all the others are doing that.
I think it's a great idea. I would show up to refresh. I could do, yeah.
I use YouTube as a tool. But I always tell them.
All right, so we got our problems.
I mean, I don't know how to solve that.
Challenges that we don't support. But does that, right? Like, I know that not all behavioral issues are, are social.
Fifteen minutes halfway through. I have Mark Cuban on speed dial. Mark Cuban's gonna give a million dollars to the so make sure you have a pitch, okay? Mark Cuban on speed dial, he's gonna put up a million dollars for.
I mean, is it just like?
Yeah, addressing.
I guess I'm wanting to broaden it from behavioral because I wanted to uh fall into that one, the belonging and like.
Okay. I had it emotional, you're emotional. You had to, didn't you?
My itch is.
So wait, are we supposed to, this is one.
The students, all students are impacted by one resource.
And teachers and staff, yeah.
I don't know if people, you say.
Categorize it.
You know, you said, who are the students? Everybody's impacted by various challenges because it affects everyone in class. That's just not like, it's being disruptive.
And some people don't get safe because they're having, they're, so it's really. I think that's important.
Well, they can, maybe one of the students.
And so, you know, they affect the whole. Take the next seven minutes on your own. Do we have time?
We have fourteen minutes.
Let's do it together. Okay, go for quantity.
Okay, I don't like that. Potentially solve the problems. And I mean, should we like kind of center around what we've said here or not necessarily?
I don't think so.
I don't, I mean, our problems are. A lot of it is, you know, the different learnings, all of it kind of is in us. Except for the resources. Yes. Yes. I guess.
Brainstorming our ideas, are we thinking about this?
You can, or you can steal, or you can blend it in, but these will also be separate for the steering committee, because these are potential, you know, kind of drafts and goals as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, everything's on the table, remember, this is, this is to kind of just get the creative juices going. But the only product there was, you do need to make a pitch.
Okay, so, I mean, um, we have a bar. As far as like more Spanish speaking staff.
Yes, we need that. So, attract rich families. You're messing up, Dan.
The word is brainstorming, or trying to get more ideas.
Yeah.
Or the cool electric.
The what?
The electric. There's like a whole thing in Las Vegas. I gave my access to. Couple of already had such electric.
And then that title. Yes, here come your employees.
Buy more employees, that's a very coming up the chain, yeah. Okay, so we've got funding, fundings, monuments, corporate funders, others. Uh, Spanish speaking staff. It's not in my head.
That was my thought, kind of like.
Yeah.
If someone sees where it's raised money.
That's right. Well, we talked one time about town health, that folks have been living, right? Yeah, yeah, it would be great to get. Yeah, all sorts of, yes, bring people in.
Okay, so.
There's so much, there's partners.
Okay, so we've got local community partners at the school, we've got writers.
I think it, I remember doing really.
It's a four, you see, it was up there like taking questions from one hundred kids.
Who did that? Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Uh, what else, what else, let's make another problem. That was really addressed, like, one of these.
Actually, there was five minutes, everybody, so you've got ten more minutes, ten, ten more minutes to get a pitch. Yeah, yeah, skip, skip the finance.
Into why this idea, you know, combine this idea. All time, they will, we'll solve it, our modeling. You know, we have a funding, you know, having funding was, you know, having all these things. So, I'm a problem. Thanks, big deal. So, those have to be up to one. To keep.
Well, yeah, because we don't want to, we don't want to, I mean, it's so nice to have smaller.
Which. I mean, there's that to go. It's a lot of work just to find a way to write down.
Meant to find a job.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, so, next sentence says, solution you develop, so to gain, through the process, I'll wear your. Into the shards.
A very extreme. What, you know, we have identified our fault, that's the strength of. School model. Is that was, yeah, that's how we're going to throw it down. We think, okay, at least we should solve.
Right.
That would create a sound, which.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel like this, one thing that this does for us is that it firstifies the approach. And in doing that, it's going to give us more, like, kind of wiggle room and creativity around addressing. How many things of various things, learning styles, learning pieces.
They would also have, maybe we never have a time to be. That would solve a lot of our initial reading, if you was ten minutes, you want to go outside, that'd be whatever they speak to, so if you want to be.
Okay, five more minutes, be ready to give your elevator pitch, five more minutes.
The strange part, you know, we can reach out, you know, but there's, like, let's go talk about, you know, great, whatever, to put it in these words, talk to. Talking about, you know, how does he plan, plans, we're just getting kids out of the school to see, okay, here's our garden here, and that's how it applies to a job, somebody's living somewhere for.
Yeah.
I think the, the big thing that I remember was, is like, not, you didn't see the big picture, right, take some of the time, or they see the perspective, the big perspective, and why are we so important, and I was like, like that. Well, eating now, like, on my plate, comes from these places, a bigger team, I was made for, the life.
Because you just throw your stuff out like they don't, they don't even think about. It's important, you know, because sometimes, especially when they get to Mexico, they're just like, well, why are we doing this, that there was some sort of goal or something that they thought looked amazing, that, you know, that they can learn from learning all these different aspects of life, anyways. I mean, so, so specific to the gorge, anyways.
And they learned.
Yeah.
You know, so the person who talks about, it's what the presentation is getting an interest in, you know, talk a lot. They're studying about, we're all about the different parts of the.
All the skills you need. Focus on the tree and the trees. What are the trees, what are the trees here?
Okay, so, somebody want to rattle off?
Two more minutes. Remember, someone's been designated as the presenter.
Sign up for my presentation.
All right. All right, you're it.
I mean, he couldn't listen to everybody else for.
It solves what problems, it solves the problem, and it will be.
So, this is kind of when you all were just spitballing together, the things that I wrote out were, uh, creating connection to the environment, to self, to giving, connecting learning. Time, to time learning to the community, about the common trees creates the long and place that's a community and networks. Um, we have a bilingual school, it's reflected of our community members, uh, and families, people want to be here and have their kids here.
Well, it's the same, like, maybe you could start with that, because that's what, you know, kind of your point was, if we made a bilingual school, like, maybe our first focus would bring in more students. Isn't that kind of what you were saying?
Okay, everybody can come back to the comment table.
All right. We can back you up too. You figured it out?
Oh, God, yes, whether or not it's correct, that remains to be seen.
You got it, you got it, Jen.
Yes.
You got it.
There's gonna be a new one.
That's a ginger tea in it.
Ooh, I love ginger.
And then just I made it, with, you know, ginger. And then boil it with water, oh, you just like cut it up, boil it hard, and like, really, let it sit for a while, and it's, you know. Fight a bit, a good amount for.
I took the candy first, too.
Okay, so, uh, here's the plan to wrap up, uh, those two that are on the steering committee, you know, I run a tight tip, and I always end meetings on time. We will do it, at seven o'clock, so, each of you is gonna have five minutes.
I aspire.
That's five minutes to present your elevator pitch, and then the rest of the group are acting the role of a shark tank, and will pressure test the ideas. And then the last five minutes is given over to just some wrap up that I need to do with, um, uh, this week and the steering. So, who would like to be the first, all right, Jen?
Go next step, just sit here.
You can do it anywhere you like.
I don't know, I don't even want to answer that. Gonna be hard to do it with these glasses. Okay, so, the problems that we would like to solve are, the, we see there's a lot of mental health issues now, within not just, um, at the school with students, but with families as well. Also, um, low income and then the extent of, uh, broken families. What we foresee is going back to our original of building a new school building, and within that is focusing on a community center that is for the school, but also for the entire community, and within that community center, we would have things like, um, a, a community store where things were, were free, people could donate, and families that needed something could come and get items from there. The community center would serve not only students during the day, but families at night, we would have maybe adult classes, English classes, um, we could also have Spanish classes. They would also give a place for students after school, a safe place for students to go, would give, give families, um, uh, if families, both parents have to work, or if we have single family, uh, single parent families, um, and the parent, the whoever's home, mother, father have to work, the community server, center would also give a place for their students to go after school, a safe place, so which would really help to solve for the parents that worry of where are their kids gonna go, so it would provide a safe place for their kids, not only during the day and, and during school, but also after school hours. Um, and additionally to that, it would really help to build community, and, um, so, we wouldn't just focus on the mental health of students, but also the mental health of the families, so provide some services, um, for not just students, but also families. Um, we've also want to emphasize sort of outdoor, um, education as well, which we feel would help with mental health, some more hands-on, getting outside, the fresh air, um, and having life skill classes for students and also for families, there's also a lot of young families that might need some help. Um, we would extend our backpack program even further, so that we're reaching more families, there's a lot more families that, low income families that we know we could probably. So that we're reaching more families, there's a lot more families that, low-income families that we know we could probably help. And sort of extending that within the community center. The, I don't know, um, those of you who aren't from Mojer, so there, we're supposed to have, they've been wanting to build a community center within the city of Mojer. Which has been on hold for financial purposes, we were thinking that it might be possible to partner with the city, the schools. And maybe coming together and actually using maybe our two acreage and starting first by building a community center. In conjunction with the city that could be utilized by everybody. Um, families, students, and the community members. And I, we feel that this would really help to solve some of the mental health issues. Um, for students and families providing various different services. Um, adult classes, we could have yoga classes, student classes, um. Like we said, a swimming pool that not only we would use during the day, but that the whole entire community could use. And really bringing together community and emphasizing bringing everyone together and making it a really welcoming place. It gives everyone, um, that sense of place.
Interrupt, because they're, they're a short story, we have them now, uh, just a, uh, minute left to kind of. Have reactions, pressure tests.
Yes.
Um, so the first with the community center, um, with being, being part of Main Street Mojer, there is a space. It is on plan, it is going to be built out in the track area. Um, and then going towards community, I know, um, that. How, how, what would be the actual steps to get parents to trust? Because, for example, White Salmon does have a learning community center, but it barely gets used because of the trust. So even though a building is there, does not necessarily mean it might be.
Do they offer like adult classes?
And yes, they do, and I think a lot of it is sometimes, um, the focus of. A lot of these kids that can go to these community centers have to actually take care of younger siblings or have other responsibilities. And that, that there's, there's always some type of gap, miscommunication.
Mm-hmm.
Of the needs that, how do we embrace that to be a bit of.
I think if it, having the community center be part of the school, like it's actually part of the school also during the day, that would help really build that trust. And they would ear, already be a part of that and be able to utilize that in addition and as well. So it'd be starting with our own families here at the school.
Thank you very much, if I was Mark Cuban, I'd drop a million bucks on you right now.
I was gonna say, we need.
Your name is Mojer Community School, and many made that front and center, yeah, so that was really good. Who's up next? Okay, Jen.
We wanted to solve some problems, so we identified the problems, and that's this kind of environment here, we'll solve that. So what's the problems here? There, we are a monolingual school in a bilingual environment. Uh, we have limited resources to address the problems that we have here in the school to nourish students' needs. And we have to address behavioral challenges that we face every day this week, so. Some of those problems, the bilingual school model, we'll solve the, the monolingual school that we currently have. Um, focusing on a place-based, and, and just initially this bilingual school part, we believe will bring more people in. And we're already almost at capacity, but it will allow us to expand a bit part. More students equals more money, which makes it, makes it so we can do more things, we have more resources. Um, we feel like a lot of the behavioral issues we're experiencing are because kids are sitting in class. And if we can get them up and out and get them doing other things, place-based things, then they may have more of a tendency to have less behavioral issues. But also the ability to learn more in a different environment. Focusing on like the community economy, uh, the gardening stuff, we, we live in an area that, you know, is heavy into agriculture. Heavy into reliance on the river for fisheries and, uh, sport and all that kind of stuff, so. You know, creating a school where we, where people can get out and do these things, if kids can get out and do those things, will give them a better perspective on how people make money. What the jobs that are out there, that they can do. So we have a gear. Uh, limited resource thing, Larry talks about, it'll be solved by increased, uh, students, and the behavioral challenges will be, will be solved by this. More points need to go over to you?
I think the bilingual is important for that, is just also that, that English speakers learn Spanish. And it would really draw, like, I would love it. You know, and then.
Yeah, we'll just emphasize on that a bit more, like, you know, what we're saying here is all in English, and people are able to see it on TV if they wanted to. Or on their computers and understand it, but a large percentage of our population can't, they can't access that the same way, and that's a problem that. What is it, forty percent?
That, that's not, no.
Of bilingual?
A bilingual.
Twenty.
What is it, what is? So it's twenty-six percent.
It's like forty percent Latino.
No, we're not forty percent.
Oh, what are we?
We're at like twenty-seven percent of Latino.
But some of those speaks English as well, what's the percentage that's just?
Just speak.
So with the bilingual. Don't, I don't want this to come the other way, because I completely support bilingual, but I think sometimes, um, we forget that there are state regulations. And how do we bring that gap? Because I know that, um, schools that are bilingual are currently with the, um, struggle. Where their states, um, accomplishments, or where their, um, children are raging, because it's only tested on a monolingual. Testing, they're way below, um, what our area is, and it's not necessarily because they are low, it's because of the way that testing happens. And so for future, as they continue to learn, that becomes the problem.
Is there a solution, you think, that, you know, where you can have both?
We are talking about state now.
Yeah, that was sort of my, we, we, we talked about this a little bit, and also said, like, maybe we have more, uh, language integration and also in other areas. Like, maybe we have, we, we really strive to have EE and art be bilingual, and like some of the, and music, and like. Have some of the other areas that are not tested be as bilingual as possible. I don't know.
Yeah. I think part of like, a big part of the bilingual, and maybe you just said this. Bringing the whole community together, right, and encourage, and same with the, the place-based and the environmental, and the kind of outside education. It's about meeting, like, providing more diversity in the way that we're teaching. And, and trying to meet the diversity of learners, because not every kid is going to be able to sit down and learn for thirty minutes in one seat.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, again. Kind of creating, uh, what I, the, the phrase I remember was, spring without walls. You know, which is that really expensive in a sense, you know, so good, third, third group.
If you took most of us, do you want to present it? Don't you sparse, okay. Uh, we're gonna present ours as a group effort. So, I don't, we have this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's interesting, because language came up for us too, and like, it's part of the community, like, having English classes too, for like, the families, the parents that don't.
We, we really identified a, both a, um, economic and a cultural divide i- in the community and in the school. And this kind of gap that I think i- interferes with having a real, um, safe and happy place to learn. Um, and trying to create a safe place for kids, uh, where they feel inspired and self-confident and all of these great things. So we, we focused on solutions or, or, um, discussed a variety of solutions that brought more joy. I think is the predominant word to each kid's day, um. Things like creating an outdoor classroom, using the two acres we have, or like, create a trail system and have a big outdoor classroom of some sort out there. Uh, I throw out the possibility of farm animals, I don't know that there was a ton of enthusiasm from the rest of the group. I think Avaya was with me on that one. Um, more, uh.
Because the cost of eggs is crazy.
Hood River does it, and, uh, there was four H up there, so there's the animals out there, I also say like gut biomes.
It's on your.
I figured you wanted everybody just looking at that.
Your belt buckle.
But I haven't dropped food on myself, um, uh, art-based learning, place-based learning. Uh, I threw out therapy animals, um. Uh, when kids are happy, they're more, uh, receptive to learning, and we talked quite a bit about, um, new experiences for kids. Like having a school, this is, I think, we, thinking along a similar line to you guys as far as like a diversity of learning. Um, so how do we get to the kids, um, to the ocean or get kids experiencing another state that maybe they haven't traveled to? Uh, what about service and volunteer experiences, like really, uh, or job shadow, like stretching them in this variety of ways? Where you're building self-confidence, you're exposing them to new things, um, and just kind of, uh, keeping that curiosity and fire burning. So, um. Plenty of ideas, did I forget any of you guys?
Yeah, I think our main focus was, if there is, if, if children are having fun. And teachers are having fun, it is, allows for their mental, like, they can learn, they want to learn. And they bring this home, so then. Be, uh, parents will come if their children are enthusiastic, if they're having fun, if they want to. And then the community will be driven, because they're like, what are they doing, what's happening? So I think it kind of starts with the children.
The, the play that we have, the drama play, I mean, we have that house to that, and it, and like, doing more things like that. Whether or not it be a science fair, or it would be some sort of, you know, thing that. And anytime your kid does anything, it just, you know, people want to go.
Yeah.
Science fairs, I don't know, all those.
Well, we've had success with some of the club stuff too, like the skate nights sometimes are well-attended, the soccer club was really well-attended, like, you know, and I think having a real diversity of those things.
Right.
It's awesome.
But, and I think Avaya said it really good, is like, when the kids are happy and, and healthy and learning, vibing, you know, we want kids to provide. That, that.
Because part of our discussion too was, some of these parents, it's already an achievement, if they surpass sixth grade level. Um, because that's what they have, they just want them to be able to do something that they were able at least to do. And so, but if, if those experiences, if, if we can open up their barrier of what they envision the world will be. In the future for them, I think we are building future generations and, and just. An amazing environment and place that Mojer is.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think also that, that barrier of like, just getting past sixth grade is true also for families who have, whose students are having a really hard time here. You know?
And, and why we like the emphasis to be on reading and writing and that, and we know how important that is, that sometimes that we. Um, need to shift that importance on the joy of learning, the, the curiosity of learning, the. Having, I think we were trying, we were struggling with this word, but being fearless, being fearless and being able to take those chances that they might not. And for a lot of families, they can't, like, they're in a spot where they don't take chances, because it could be, you know, whether or not they have a meal or something, so.
So just a thing that I heard in that presentation is, uh, there's definitely a goal in there in terms of developing and correcting them. I guess that's, 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 that's kind of what I, that's what was emerging from that is, you want to curriculum that is, uh, as you say. Place-based, outdoors, environmental, and that, that's gonna, that's gonna be the taste and feel of your.
I mean, we kind of heard that vein throughout all of them.
Yeah.
We heard like, community-focused, bilingual-focused.
So for the steering committee, these are the themes that are beginning to emerge, that they're gonna make it very easy to translate into goals. Um, so with that, because I got five more minutes, so I'll make sure that we, we, we honor the time. I'd like to make a proposal, so, here was the moonshot activity. A lot of good energy, there's a lot of good ideas. If you noticed, I had very little to do with it, and it's a very easy thing to facilitate. If you can get past turning the pages correctly, which I even stumbled on. So, what I would propose is that you run the moonshot activity. And do an event for your administration and staff and faculty, and that you try to get some parents in. Whether it's fan picks, or you, board members, and community members. Invite your friends to an evening, the adult, and you know, because if you do a email blast, you might get a couple people, but really, uh, board members. Really press your other, uh, friends that have kids here to come to an evening, and you run it. Okay, so that's, that's what I'm proposing, because the, on the other thing is, is, um, I have very limited time left. And I don't need my own life, I mean, I'm going on, on a big trip, uh, January twenty-first. Yeah, um, that'll be gone for five weeks, um, so I want to, I would love it if, if I could get together with the steering committee one more time. Um, and I have a few dates available next week, and that's it. So I'll give those dates to Michelle, she'll put it, she'll broadcast it out, but what, what, what I'd like to see for the steering committee is. Let's schedule some moonshot activities for faculty, for parents, got to get back to how you're collecting your data, because I'm getting the sense it's a little thin. I can really get that, and begin to start tabulating these things, so hold on to all this material. Um, you know, because there, that, you've really generated some fascinating ideas. And some big hairy, um, nation's goals, so, don't lose sight of those. And then maybe that, you know, this whole thing, the, the thing I was most impressed with, was just how much community came up. And that's at the core of your name, you know, so it's, it's gotta, that's gotta be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, any last questions, reactions?
I just have one question, thank you for all that, um, did we get many more folks responding to the survey?
We're fourteen, and I have literally blasted it, um, four times now, and it's been, it's in our newsletter. Which, you know, other people have seen, it went out to make promoter.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
I wonder.
It, it is a tough question.
Really struggled, it's just such.
It was a big question.
I just worry if it's also people think they've already done it, since there's been so many surveys, like we need to call it survey five or.
Yeah. I wonder.
Maybe we make it.
Well, there's never been a great turnout for any.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, like.
Right.
That is. I mean, I really like the idea of, of having more, and, and we were just talking about. Like, have these parents that need to fill out this, um, form for this help to, agree to the health ed, and I can't even get those. And, and, and we talked about, well, what, give them a hundred dollar Amazon card, or you put their name in a hat or something, I don't know. Like, it, it's like, what is the incentive to get?
What about if we did a community dinner?
So I'm gonna say, then, want to talk about this at the steering committee. More ways, because obviously just a. We were hoping to capitalize on all the kind of organic error that was taking place during the holidays, and obviously the holidays just overwhelmed everybody as.
Well, and we might want to think too about just kind of shifting the approach and using the data that, like, what we've created here today. And the limited data that we do have, it might, it might be that we can work with what we have, create some draft tools. And then take those draft tools out.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, again, I, you're not, you're not at loss of good ideas here, so, that, that's another approach, but let's, yeah, yeah.
I was just thinking, we had to talk about making a phone call, however, there's also the, the card line.
We did that, we did that.
Oh, we did that.
Yeah.
Not for this survey.
What survey was it that you had from a long ago and?
Yeah, that was for the four-day school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, but that is, I mean, that's, that's a natural gathering point, so, you know, so anyway. Um, I will, I will send, Michelle gives her the dates, so I'm available next week, and.
We should, but any folks kind of trying to do that now?
Yeah, and the other thing.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
If you want to do a lot of the parents, the other thing is maybe. One of, a couple of us going to the bus in the Dells at the end of the day, while people are waiting. Because I, we're gonna get a lot of parents there, because they have to come pick up their kids on the bus, and we have probably sixty kids on the bus. You know, I mean, because we have two buses, and that, if we were there. You know, I mean, because we have two buses and that if we were there, you know, while they're waiting for the bus and asking you.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just asking questions, you know?
I think.
Maybe just a few easier answers.
Yeah.
It, it can become complicated because usually a bus just goes. And everyone and parents are like rushed to get, at least it was last year. I don't know this year.
I have never been there.
And then usually other buses are coming in because one talk is also with, it's, it's, it's not a good scenario to try to be at. At least for the Dells. I can.
Probably a good education to see what that's like.
That would be great.
I will be gone next week, so one board member could take my spot because we can't have more than.
Ooh, invitation right there.
Because I'll be.
We can't have more than one board.
No, we can't have more than three of us. So there's three already on the steering committee, but I will be gone. So if someone wanted to. Right, yes, yes, we have to, yes.
I have four dates left. Tuesday, January fourteenth, Thursday, the sixteenth, Friday, the seventeenth and Monday, the twentieth. And I would rather not do the twentieth.
Yeah, I would rather not.
That's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
January sixteenth and that would for.
Uh, so we, we have a middle school parent meeting at five thirty. So what?
We do it earlier?
We do three thirty, even if we do three thirty to five or three thirty to four thirty.
That would be great on the sixteenth. That would be really well for me. Because I have a letters meeting, a math meeting, or a parents.
And I have a made for Mojer meeting.
Okay, so Thursday, the sixteenth.
Okay.
Um, that's a week from tomorrow, right? Today's Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Is it a, is it a two-hour meeting?
No, 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 we're, we're just gonna do an hour. Because it's just basically to get, get the steering committee back on track. Uh, with, with our brainstorming.
Will someone send notes about that? You won't be, okay.
Oh, you know what? I can't do that.
Uh, yes.
I won't be able to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you do earlier?
Tuesday, the fourteenth.
I can't do that one.
Thursday, the sixteenth, earlier.
Yeah, can we do earlier, like two thirty?
We have letters, so um. No.
I think it's the twenty-first.
Oh, it's the tw- uh, the twenty.
Which I'll try to make. I'm gonna be out of town the next two weeks. I might be on that one. I'll let you know for sure.
What about like two thirty to three thirty?
We have, we have training.
We, we have a, yeah.
He said seventeen too, right?
Yeah, Friday, the seventeenth.
At two thirty, can we do that at two thirty?
I would just have to, yeah, two thirty, yes.
And that's on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so Friday, Friday, the seventeen.
Yeah, two thirty to three thirty?
Yeah.
All righty, thank you very much.
I can take that spot.
I mean, you might as well, yeah.
Thanks. Hi, Robin, thank you.
Hey, Robin's gone.
I'm in. Thanks, everyone. Bye.